Alright, good morning, this is. Planning board work session. Um, I think we're looking at the Sunoco Station, do we have the applicant on the line?
Yes.
Wonderful, welcome. Who do we have with us?
Uh, William Pitcher, the architect.
Alright. So, we wanna take an opportunity this morning, kinda we got some updated materials from you. Uh, take a look at where things stand, uh, ask any additional questions, clarifications, etc. Um, do you wanna just give us a five-minute overview on what updates and changes you've made?
Okay, do I have control of the screen?
Would you like to share your screen? Sure, one second. You should have access now.
Okay, um. Okay, um, basically, the interior drawings are still the same, there were no changes here. Uh, when we get down to the exterior is where the changes are.
Nothing's, nothing's come up on our screen yet.
Oh, um. Well, let's see what I've gotta find on the bottom. Share. Okay, where is my? Share, okay. Uh. Okay, that do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, basically, what we're doing is we're taking off all of the siding. And we're gonna be putting up an EFS, uh, finish on. Uh, where the vinyl siding used to be, we're still maintaining the, uh, stone veneer at the, uh, base of the building. And so that goes all the way around, and the colors, we're keeping pretty much what we had previously proposed in the. In the tan and the gray. Um. And basically, this just shows. This is, uh, the trim color, um. So that's pulling out a little bit more, but, uh, basically, we haven't changed the exterior at all, we got rid of the, uh. Logo that, um. That was not allowed on the canopy. And, uh, that's just the original drawings there, and. On the changes of the site, um, what I've shown here in red. Uh, is basically. What has changed from the previous drawings. Um, this dotted line is the existing. Curb here, the red is the new proposed curb. Uh, these are the tanks. Um, and basically, we're doing, um, we're getting rid of the ballards. Um, and basically, we're bringing down. The pavement, so we have a four-inch curb there.
Does that, does that currently? You know, run up to the sill of the door?
Currently, everything's flat at, uh, threshold height, yes.
Do you have the grading to drop that four inches? Is there a four-inch rise in there to?
Well, the, the site itself basically drains this direction. Uh, so that when we come over flat and then drop down, uh, it's still draining from high to low. So we'll have the four inches for, uh. For the edge of the sidewalk. Uh, then back.
Will you be able to provide a grading plan? For our engineer to look at?
I don't. I don't think I have. Topo information on this property. I'd have to, um, talk to the client about getting a topo survey. Uh, so basically, we're maintaining the, the. All of the parking here, we're putting the handicap over here, maintaining these, this change down here. Uh, basically, we're bringing the new curb out to the edge of the, um. Uh, right away. Um, and moving. The dumpsters down a few feet, so that basically, the truck can either come in from Thompson Road. And. Back into here and then get the dumpsters and then go out, or if it's early in the morning, they can come in, back in. And grab it, so these two spaces really. Also are acting as turnaround spaces, uh, for the, uh. For the main garbage truck, uh, and we're taking out, this is dotted line is the existing curb. And so we're bringing in new curb here. To here, we have a, a sign here that says out only. We have enter signs here. Uh, exit signs here. Uh, and basically, the sidewalk. Um, and this is a delivery door, um. It's basically just delivery, uh, there is nothing there on the backside that, um. Customers can go in through the, uh. Through the working area of the back of the store. Uh, so those are basically the changes that have been made, no changes in the grading, this just shows the curbs. Um, dimensioning here of the curbs. And, uh, this, those are all the same, the photographs, so that's basically the changes that have been made.
Okay, um. Couple of questions while we're sitting on the site one right here. Required. Parking spots, you need nineteen, is that correct?
I believe so.
So you'd have to get a variance for one to go down to eighteen?
I don't see where we fit in another one.
Well, where I'm actually going is, could it? Be a possibility of getting a variance to remove spot seventeen and eighteen to kind of provide easier access? I mean, those, those spots are kind of in an awkward location.
Correct.
Do you need them? Does the, does the business model that's there require? Eighteen spots?
No, I think he said that, uh, it's really the, the eight spots up here and the, it's really the parking in this area. Uh, I don't think he's. Previously had had, you know. That many people parking in the back at any given time. We would, we would like to ask for that, that would simplify things, that would make it very clear that that's a loading dock area.
But when you, when you go to ZBA to get a variance. With the, the parking requirements here. I mean, I, we can talk to the rest of the board, we're missing a couple of people this morning, so. But I think eliminating those two spots cleans up that back edge a little bit, allows for easier truck access. And you don't kinda have that little tail sticking out, trying to protect a couple of cars on the end right there, so. At the end of stall number sixteen, you, you'd need to provide that curving and protect the, the end there, but you kind of. Clean up that edge where the dumpsters are.
Uh, are you, now, what I've done here is I've extended the curb to protect eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, you're saying getting, keeping the sidewalk here and the curb there.
Yeah.
Get rid of that.
Yeah, keep the sidewalk and extend that kind of peninsula. Curving to protect spot number sixteen.
Yep.
Okay.
I, I think, I think that, uh, that that makes sense. Mark, you, you had looked at this earlier. Did you have any comment on that?
No, no, I, it, it, again, I think, you know, it's kind of up to the board how they'd like to see this set up.
Okay. And do we have that easement?
I have, uh, found the original text of the easement, it's nineteen forty-four. And it's pre-zoning, uh, it was drafted by a lawyer. And it lists everything that the, you require permission. For the property owner to do within the easement, uh, it does not state. Uh, the right of passage over the property, the right of access. Uh, but it does say that you cannot erect a fence. Within the easement, which implies right of access, that you can't.
Okay, can, can you, can you please send that to, to, to the department and I'll take a look at it? Um, if that's what it says, I would probably tend to, to agree with that interpretation, and it's been used in that way, um. No one seems to have, uh, obstructed it, so it's. If it's got enough language in there. And it's been used that way, then I think that would probably. Be, you know, what we're gonna get.
Hmm. Um.
So it's an agreement between the two, uh, it's. The, the easement is on the adjacent property entirely, correct?
No, the easement is on this property. Uh, to the.
Oh, okay. It to, it to the favor of the adjacent, okay.
Yeah. Um, let's see, what was I gonna say, the, uh, about the easement, um? I'll give you the text, uh, it lists things like you can't do a slaughterhouse, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, without permission.
Got it. Okay, yes, I, I'd like to look at that, thank you.
Okay, I'll send that over today.
Great, thank you. Um. Going back through, see. Building materials, any other site questions from the board or from? Uh, the DOT did want to see the sidewalk be continuous through the driveway.
Okay, is.
I see it there on the, on the curved island, I believe.
So they want it through here?
Yeah, if you were gonna do concrete.
And also through here?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna have to look at their specs to see what they have for a, a driveway, cuz that's going to be. Um. I mean, we've got tanker trucks and everything going over that sidewalk, it'll have to be a different. I think specification. Okay. Did DOT, uh. Mention a, a detail number, specification number for that?
Yeah, that man. Yes. We can change it, right, we're not modifying the site in that way, though. Any other site-related things, Mark, you said you were good on, kind of preliminary review of this?
Is, is this on to county?
Yes, it has.
Do, do they have comments?
Uh, no, there was the DOT comments of sidewalk. Uh, they, they had comments about the, the easement access, and I think that was their main point.
I am thinking. That the sidewalk to the credit union, I don't think there's a sidewalk in front of the credit union, no, I don't have a photograph. I'm thinking that that's, sidewalk is going to dead-end into grass right here.
We've said the applicant in town are encouraged to ensure any easement for other driveway users is shown on the site.
So does the sidewalk need to be shown on this property? Right now, I think it's shown outside its property. The sidewalk.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be on.
Well, because, so the U-Haul. U-Haul's is kind of right on the edge of the. The roadway there too, I believe.
They would need to get a work permit from state DOT to do this.
Okay.
Work in the right of way at all, so the state needs to approve them.
But that, that sidewalk connects to the U-Haul sidewalk. To the north, to the north, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's an existing sidewalk that comes to here.
Yeah, and it, it's right along the edge of the road as well, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, so you should coordinate with state DOT on that, and you're, you might need a highway work permit to do that work.
That should be shown in your, in your site layout here. That connection.
Okay.
Alright, we wanna go down, uh, let's start building materials. We're gonna look at both the existing, uh, existing photos and your, your site materials. So, in terms of materiality, um. IFIS is generally not allowed. As a material. Are there other options that you looked at?
Not really, I mean, we're in a wood frame building. Um. I was driving around and it seems that most of the commercial is either painted concrete block. Or something that looks like EFS. Some kind of stucco flat finish, painted finishes, those seem to be the two main finishes in the, in the neighborhood. That and brick.
And we've got the, the burn dairy. Right adjacent.
And I think that's got concrete, uh, I think that's hardy board. Siding on it, I don't think it's wood siding.
I don't know that I'm necessarily angry for wood siding, I'm just trying to think of, you know. Were any other materials explored? For that IFIS? Finish, I mean, generally, like I said, it's not an approved material. Um, only in very rare instances are we looking at IFIS, and generally, when we do that, it's very high up. We don't, don't generally bring it down, um. So, would you entertain other materials and kind of look at some of the other contacts of the neighborhood and? See if you can propose something that. That does work?
Well, I think that probably the only other alternative would be, uh, a cement fiber clapboard. Um, I was trying to, in the flat finish, trying to get away from. The clapboard appearance and the residential appearance and trying to give you a, a flat. More of a flat commercial. Surface, um, but, uh. If you're. You've, well, you've already approved the, the Hardy board next door, so I would have no problems in changing it to that.
Yeah. Man, I'd love to see what options you come up with, um. You know, I think we're making steps in the right direction on this, so, thank you, um. The signage. You have the Sunoco sign on the building plus the adjacent. Uh, pizza sign.
Yeah.
That's there, so we'll just need to make sure that you're including a signage table on your drawings. Uh. I don't know, it's, right, we've gone back and forth in whether it's one tenant or two tenants.
It's shown as one tenant on the floor plan. Uh, this, this was a request by. It's a sentimental request from the, uh, client to maintain the, the original historic sign.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's something that's not necessary. In terms of, um. The tenants or another lease agreement or anything. Uh, he's just asking. That can he keep it up for sentimental reasons, this is the, the original sign that. I think he was there twenty-five years before he sold it to the other people. Um. And this was his sign, so that's the only reason, I mean, it's, we're asking, but if it's a problem, we'll take it down.
I go inside?
Is it? Yeah, I mean, I, is it, it's not a pizzeria any longer?
Well, um. I don't know what he's actually. What the actual lea-, uh, there's probably a legal. LLC associated with it, um.
So, I, I just. It, it's non-conforming in, like, literally every way that.
Okay.
That, that our sign code is right now. It's. You know.
Yeah.
It, it really doesn't fit any of, of, of what we would allow for a sign. And I. Don't think that it's something that we would want to set a precedent on, um, in fact, the, when the sign code was redone multiple years ago. All these signs were actually supposed to be amortized out that were non-conforming, so this one kind of slid through the.
Good.
Cracks anyway, that's my opinion, uh, legal opinion board, but that's up to you.
Yeah, the, the suggestion here was made, you know, could it be placed inside?
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
We appreciate the, the sentimental value of it and. You know, that it, it means something to the site, to this applicant. So we don't wanna necessarily just. Just pitching it, but. Could it be placed inside, could it be made a feature inside the building? That way it's kept and stored and protected.
Yeah, I think they're probably. Probably in this, on the left-hand side of the building, interior where the, where the kitchen services, there's probably enough ceiling height. To put it in, um, I will talk to him about that, I, option.
Okay.
If that comes down, do you have another, um, what's your, what's the plan then for that signage?
Uh, basically, I think I'm allowed the one Sunoco sign on the face of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Now.
The, the question is, you know, what, what else is in there and, and it would a variance be, um. Suitable?
Well, I mean, we're allowed one sign, um, I suppose. If you move the Sunoco lettering up, you could put. Some additional lettering below, but we haven't, I haven't discussed that with the client, you know, like.
Is it a deli?
Um. Well, they're going to sell, uh, it's a full kitchen, so I mean, it's pizza, it's deli, yeah. I mean, so it could be, we could have the large Sunoco and then we could have some smaller lettering of deli pizza, whatever. Um. What is, what is the town's, uh? Restrictions on signage and windows?
You have twenty-five percent of the window facing the street. Of the window area.
Okay. So I mean, some of that, maybe. You know, maybe you start doing. You keep the, the lettering on the outside, but maybe we take. You know, six inches here and we do pizza, deli, sandwiches, whatever. Um. You know, as, as a visual band across the windows, um. Could do that in vinyl, translucent vinyl, so that that would appear. When the building is open, backlit at night. When the store is open and when you're. Pretty much turned off and shut down for the night, that pretty much would, that signage would disappear, only the Sunoco here would. Probably remain lit. Um. Do you have a problem with this? With the Sunoco on the tanks, we haven't talked about that.
Yes.
We talked about this one.
Yeah, the one on the canopy.
That's been removed.
I don't, I don't know.
I have to look at that, there are specific rules about it, um, I can't remember if you.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get you clarity on that one, but I know that, oh, I don't remember where it is, the canopy cannot. Can you go down to the existing photos? Alright, starting kind of here, we got the.
There's the front.
Yeah, the dish on top of the roof, is that staying or going?
I haven't talked to him about that, we haven't gotten into, uh, what his data needs are for.
Where, where I'm going with this is a lot of this stuff needs to be shown on your elevations, you know, so if there's stuff on the roof that's staying, like the, the dish. You either need to, to call it out as being removed, or call it out and show it as being existing. Any of the, those vertical conduit on the building, meters. Um, you know, all that stuff should be represented on your drawings. Um. What else is there? The, the gas pumps, uh, the individual pump island signage may include the following. Pump island numbers, fuel prices, and a small single logo or fuel name on each side of the pump.
Okay, we're good.
Can we circle back to the window signs real quick? Um, I just wanna read the code cuz there's a little more to it, so you can't exceed twenty-five percent of the total window area of the window spacing, the street. And also, that must be included in the calculation of the overall signage allowed for the use. So you're allowed a hundred and twenty square feet total for your building signage, so that window sign would. So the building sign and the window sign together could not exceed a hundred and twenty square feet.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah. So it looks like those little pump signs also are included in the little square footage.
Yeah, the, the site logos on the pumps.
Are included in the square footage?
All such signage shall be included in the square footage, allows for the lot loaded by code, that's under vehicle, gas station, island signage.
Okay, so square footage of pump sign.
Sixty. Yeah, so if you're, if you're starting at one-twenty and, and removing. What, four logos on the islands. Minus the Sunoco sign, that's gonna kind of dictate what's gonna be left over. For any pizza deli, yes. Et cetera signage in the window, is that incorrect?
Yeah.
Yeah, one-twenty for the window signs, the Sunoco sign and the gas island pump signs.
Yes. Yes. Place signs too.
So they. Well, those are on the actual, yeah, those are on the.
Yes, I shall be counted, and it's signing area of this section.
Right. And you're removing the freestanding gas price sign out front, correct?
Correct, yeah, that red one.
Yeah. Alright. The, the trees are something I was looking at too, the calorie pairs. I'm thinking of Ohio and Pennsylvania, they now consider them invasive, I'm still kind of looking at what else would fit in there. As an alternative.
Okay.
I don't think we have it disallowed currently in our design guidelines, but it's something we're looking at. So I'll try to get some alternatives. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking. Thinking of something vertical, uh, which. I mean, the trees obscure the signage, obscure the building, and I'm looking for something that, yeah, it's a tree, but. It's going to be vertical and you can see through it. Between the trees rather than something that's horizontal and spreading.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll look at some things and, and we can bounce some ideas back and forth. But you aren't looking for more of a column shape?
Yes.
Yeah.
And again, I think that the issue is that this is such a tight area, so close, I mean, in other areas, you've got maybe this much grass. Between the curb and the, and the building or the parking lot, so putting a large tree makes sense, but we are. Limited to this and, you know, the, the real issue is. You're either gonna have to have very high branching to get above the traffic. Uh, if you're going to do a very wide-spreading tree.
There any overhead lines there? There are not. Yeah, and then you have the canopy right there, it is a tight spot. Yeah, I mean, the taller building, style trees. That's it.
I mean, if we could find, uh, it wasn't in the list, but I mean, can, can we do plants that are not on the list?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I mean, if I could find something that in this shape that was bigger. You know, I, I'd like that, you know, in place of that. This guy is, uh, you know, it's a small. Small and it's eight feet high maximums, but if we could get something two, two times that, something in the twenty. Twenty to thirty-foot column kind of. Growth pattern.
Thank.
Okay. Okay.
What other questions does our board have? Kathy, Kathy, you guys are good?
Yep.
Yeah, I think they made good progress, I guess.
Great, um. Mark, your side, best you, Jamie, anything else you need?
No.
Access?
Nope, other than the excess. I feel like it's, we're heading in the right direction on this for sure.
One thing I wanna say, we're gonna be doing the variance route for parking. I want to give you the dates for that. Um. You're gonna wanna get a ZBA application into our office. And the um. The deadline for the, so there's an October twenty-first, we being meeting that deadline is September thirtieth. So you're gonna wanna get a ZBA application into our office.
Okay.
For ten twenty-three.
And I assume that the justification is simply the constraint of the site. Is the reason for decreasing in the fact that the other argument is that we don't believe that the the customer volume necessitates all the parking spaces.
Yeah, I think.
Right, and and this board will give a recommendation, especially because the site works much better.
Yeah, and it is, it's a safer flow for traffic around. And pedestrians around the building. So. Great.
Hey, let me see if I can give you back your control. Uh.
Well, I appreciate the progress that you've made on this. Um I know the. The town and the border. Pleased with the direction that it's headed. Um. So as you get materials pulled together. You know, you can circulate them back to this board. Um. When is our next? Your A-track, so your next. Appearance in front of us would be the tenth. At our meeting, tenth of October?
Yes. So the deadline for that is the twen- uh September twenty-sixth.
So full updated materials in order to be on. On the. September tenth meeting and we'll do a, we'll do a preliminary update at that point, do a final review, cuz we cannot make any action until after. The ZBA meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
You can recommend the ZBA meeting at that.
And we will recommend to the ZBA at that meeting as well, and then once we get that. Uh decision back from ZBA, we'll be able to make a final determination at the first meeting in November.
Okay. Uh what's the date of the November meeting?
I'm sorry?
What is the date of the November meeting?
November fourteen.
Thank you. Okay, um. I wanna give you back control of this. Uh where are we going?
Could this be a a red stop chair somewhere?
Yeah. Trying to get, there we, there we go. Um. Okay. I don't see.
In general, if you hover your mouse at the top of the screen.
I I think if you just exit too, you should be okay.
There we are.
Oh, there you go. Cool.
All set?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good enough.
All right. Who is iPhone two, one, three, seven, nine, five?
That's me, Nate. Joe.
Hey, Joe.
I've been on.
All right, Joe, are you here Thursday?
Yeah. Yep.
Um. Jamie, I don't think we have anything else part of the public session, right?
Correct.
Okay, so at this point, we'll stop the public meeting.